Working earlier, there we go. Good evening, everyone. I'll now call to order the September 6, 2025 work session of Lake City Council. Couple reminders for everyone at the top of the meeting this evening. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. This is a non-legislative working session of council. Public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting on topics related to this portion of the administrative code only. As always, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. It must begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. And as another reminder, after our last work session, which was on August 19th, council members in the public were able to submit questions and comments on this portion of the administrative code, and tonight we will be having a discussion about those sections. I'm going to call the role of members. Counselor Ahmed.
Here.
Ferbently. Counselor Royo. Counselor Kalix. Counselor Craig.
Here.
Counselor Diaz. Counselor Hirsch.
Here.
And I am President Bakay, and I'm here. All right. Our next order of business, counselors, is the approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 2025 meeting. Are there any comments on those minutes that you've been provided with? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote for the approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, I will turn this over to our solicitor, Mr. Barry Handwerker, to lead our discussion of the administrative code.
Good evening. Testing. So, as a reminder, I went through the sections that we're dealing with tonight, last month. The table of contents is up on the screen. Tonight's session is really intended for discussion amongst yourselves regarding provisions you might have questions about, want to see modified in any way. I will start, if it's okay with you, Councilman Hirsch, I had one question that I think we could start with on some discussion, and it was about the provision in boards, commissions, and authorities, and in particular, requirements for their posting minutes, getting their minutes done and posted on the website. So, a couple things, historically, there's no legal requirement to post things on the website. This does provide currently, and we're going to deal with, if you want to move to Article Nine, the draft that you have before you for your consideration does require that they keep minutes, which is a requirement of the Sunshine Act. It does require that they ultimately be posted to the website, and that's under Section One, Part F. It's not specific about the website, because that's city policy. So, if you wanted to insert somewhere in F, suggestions to address some of your concerns would be a requirement that board minutes be posted to the city's publicly accessible website promptly after approved. I know one of your questions was before the next meeting. One of the problems with that is they don't become minutes and official until they're actually approved, like we've done tonight. So, one of the things historically you see is you might see months and months go by without minutes getting posted, because they haven't met for months and months at times. But, so you can't require something to be posted that doesn't technically legally exist yet. I mean, drafts are there, but a draft is predetermined, it is not the minute, and you don't want to confuse it as the minute for the Sunshine Act purposes. And you could further place in here something that they be promptly posted on the website following their approval. That is one way to address the concern you had raised, and I just opened that again up for you to decide. I know it was your concern, I just thought it would be a good way to start discussion tonight.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I just had mentioned this because I know, like, at times, I have gone to, excuse me, to the board minutes to kind of look back at what took place at, I mean, Traffic Commission is one I've had particular interest in, and often, I feel like there has been, like, a couple meetings that have gone by, and we still don't have minutes from the previous one. And at first, my thought was, well, could we say, like, they're required to post these minutes within 30 days of that meeting, but then, like you were saying, it wouldn't make sense if, like, they meet on a quarterly basis, or, you know, because they all have different meeting schedules. You know, I think, to put something, I would just say, I think to put something in to say, like, promptly would be, like, a nice, just to, you know, I think encourage a culture of, like, I had kind of worded it, like, you know, if the next meeting, before the next meeting takes place, that there have been minutes presented and approved, just to, as a way of, like, one, to get around the logistical hurdle of, like, okay, you don't have, you can't say 30 days, you know, I guess if that commission, board commissioner authority only meets, like, on a quarterly basis, but could you say, hey, by the next meeting, you know, you should have your minutes? I mean, I guess you can't post them, that's the other thing I didn't necessarily consider, is that they're not really adopted minutes until they're adopted, so. I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it could be worded in such a way that, like, by that next meeting, after their adoption, they're posted to the website, or if there are other, I mean, frankly, other considerations that I'm not aware of administratively, but I just thought that that could be something that, you know, just kind of provides to make sure that we're transparent and timely with that transparency, as far as, like, posting our minutes to the website, but, like I said, there might be things that I'm not, you know, aware of, but I just thought I'd, that was the one thing that I was, like, thinking about as we looked at this.
Thank you, Counsel Hirsch. I wanted to kind of add, and maybe this can help us provide some context, because all of the boards, commissions, and authorities do meet on a different kind of cycle, and the minutes aren't the minutes until they are approved, could we simply word that as promptly after they are adopted? And would you, not knowing the mechanism, you know, uploading a file seems pretty straightforward, but would you advise that we put a time limit, like, within 30 days after adoption, or do you think, in your opinion, does promptly get it done?
In my opinion, I think promptly works. I think promptly gets you faster than 30 days. If you put something like, within 30 days, I think the tendency for whoever staff is that's responsible for that board is going to wait until the 29th day and post it. I think you have more control over making sure that it is done timely by leaving the word as promptly. That's just my experience in dealing with sort of time limits in the past. Like, you always buck up against a time limit versus, when you say promptly, everybody assumes promptly is not 30 days unless there's facts and circumstances, such as, you know, a blizzard shut down City Hall for two months. That's not going to happen, right? But promptly is usually faster than 30, so I do think that is a good way of dealing with it. And keep in mind that staff has been given more direct responsibilities under this draft of the administrative code than what might currently exist in terms of boards, commissions, and authorities, and our city ordinances now. There is nothing that directs staff to really do anything with respect to the boards and commissions and authorities, and this is putting a burden on them and an obligation on them to make sure that, A, the Sunshine Act is complied with, B, to make sure their boards do take minutes, and C, make sure they do post them for purposes of transparency and accountability. And not only do you have the boards to hold accountable, but now you have city staff, so I think that's a good way of approaching it.
Do you mind if I make one other comment, which is that I know that we're in the administrative code, there is, like, a training for new board members. I guess maybe it doesn't make sense on an individual basis, but to maybe mention it in there, like, hey, ideally, you know, we're posting minutes once they're adopted promptly.
Again, there's a whole section on providing training to all newly elected officials and to boards, commissions, and authority members. Right now, City Council has a resolution in place, which requires all newly appointed board commission and authority members and members that are reappointed to attend the training, which I conduct, dealing with the Sunshine Act and the right-to-know law, and that is part of my presentation regularly, is that, A, they need to be done, and B, they are public records, and C, the city will be posting them on the website.
And, like, as we go through each section, just to go back to our process, if you remember the last time, we sort of went around and everyone either got to make a comment, question, suggestion, clarifying, or if they had none, so. Will, are we continuing in Section Seven, or Article Seven, or, I'm sorry, Article Nine, while we're on it? Okay. So, we'll continue around the table if there's anything else from Article Nine.
Okay, with nothing further on Article Nine, I will obviously, between now and the next time we present the draft to you, make the changes we just talked about in Subpart F, and circulate them to you so that you have them. Those are, again, this is why we start with a draft, this is your document, and those are all well-taken points. You know, going back to, I'll skip the table of contents, and maybe one of the ways we'll do this here is just quickly go through and make sure we do have questions or comments to cover each section. So, Article Three is organizational structure, departments, and officials. And I note that at the last meeting, just so we're aware, in Section Two under departments and the reporting in Number Six, the form of the reporting, there was discussion about changing that from Director of Administrative Services to Mayor, in terms of who controls the form of the report to be given by department head. Is there, are there any questions, comments, discussion on Article Three, which is the organizational structure, departments, and officials, which takes us through, you know, the organizational chart, the appointed officials, provisions specific to police and fire, which, as I indicated last month, are essentially pull-ins directly from our existing Code of Ordinances. And it also covers civil service, which is a pull-in from our existing ordinances and applicable law.
Thank you. I had my questions answered at last meeting with those items, so I didn't have anything for, further in Article Three. Counselor Hirsch? Counselor Ahmed?
Thank you. My only question or comment was in regards to the reports, at least annually or such time that council deems necessary. I do agree that changing it to approval by the mayor would be appropriate, but I also wanted to, you know, it says at times such as council deems necessary, but could, like, should there be any language in there about an individual council requesting a report, like, from their committee, or is that not applicable in this sense?
So, my suggestion on that is, again, individual council members shouldn't have the authority, it should be either a council decision or a committee decision as a group. No one council member can act on behalf of council. So, as council deems appropriate, that could be as a council committee deems appropriate. There is a one annual report that's already required under the charter and the administrative code, which is the budget presentations, there's a report on the department as part of that, so this was really built in as an additional, and this was really meant as reporting, not as sort of, you know, come and talk. Those are things that I think need to be worked out. The flexibility here is council deems appropriate, is gives you as much opportunity as council as an entity would want to bring a department head to it for discussion.
Thank you, and I guess what I was referring to is if a committee chair reached out to council president and said that they wanted to request a report of council in their committee, or, you know, how would we go about that? And should we put it in the charter on what the provisions to do that would be? Because reports requested by council is a tool that council has, so maybe, should that be a sub-point, or should the reports requested from council be addressed in Section Six?
Well, again, I mean, this is your document, but I think it's already covered by your procedures, which is, you have the ability to ask council president to request a report. If council president denies that, you certainly have the right to make a motion and get four members of the council, if they all agree, it doesn't matter what the council president wants there.
Or a committee.
Or a committee. So, I mean, you can make it more specific. You know, again, this is a draft meant to try and guide, you're always straddling two different concerns, right? Too specific boxes you into requirements, and not enough specificity doesn't answer questions. So, it's trying to, it's trying to create procedures that you can follow. If council feels like they should add something here, that's certainly your discretion to do so.
Thank you.
Counselor Diaz, anything on Article Three? Counselor Craig? Okay, thank you.
So, that takes us to Article Six, and as a reminder, Article Six is city council. This includes rules and order of business, meetings, committees, previous councils, filling vacancies in office, training, oaths, unexcused absences, conduct of staff communications. So, you know, again, I'll open it up, does anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts regarding the provisions, again, that were meant as a starting point for your discussion?
Mr. Handwerker, I do. So, I had sent these to you prior to the meeting, just to ensure that they would be something that would be appropriate or to introduce. So, counselors, I want to draw your attention to, in this, Article Six, Section Two, Letter F, which is the agenda, essentially the contents of the meeting agenda. It lists in, as written, "The agenda of each regular meeting shall be as follows," and then lists an order of the meeting, which we are all familiar with in our agendas. My suggestion here, and something that I'd like us to discuss, is to slightly change the way that it is worded at the beginning of this section to, "The agenda of each regular meeting shall, should include the following, or shall include the following." And then name the items on the agenda, similar to what you see here, call to order, pledge of allegiance, calling rule of members, approval of minutes, proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition, public comment, reports requested by council, reports of committees of council, or interim reports of committees of council, legislative agenda, report of the mayor, report of the president of council, council comments, and adjournment. And the only change that I would suggest, or that I am suggesting that we talk about here, is to eliminate the public comment beyond there twice, because it's already covered. I have a couple of reasons for this that I'd like to share. So, this would dictate that the contents of the meeting, which is what the administrative code is intending to do here, but not necessarily the order, but also remove the requirement, but not preclude the inclusion of a second public comment period, because it's already on the list of things that can be on the agenda. My opinion here, and I contend that the option of having a single public comment period, you know, perhaps taking preregistered comments first and then opening it up directly after would facilitate more participation in public comment and remove a barrier of needing to wait through what is sometimes a lengthy meeting, that often end later than attendees can stay. And so, if we are essentially consolidating, you know, the requirement to have two comment periods, not taking away the option, but listing them as available, that we can make that available to future councils and their prerogatives, and hopefully, remove that barrier. Yes, so that would be my point for discussion, Mr. Handwerker.
Anybody have any thoughts? Mr. Hirsch?
I would say, I think that makes sense. I think, like, my question would be, I guess, who has the discretion to call for that second public comment period, or does that just defer to the procedure that we have outlined in an earlier section that basically says the rules are set by an absolute majority plus one person? Is that, is that who would be the decider of whether that second public comment period is offered?
So, the rules aren't set by a majority plus one, the rules are changed by, or waived by a majority plus one. The rules are set by a majority of council. So, again, let's assume a new council in place, and for lack, for sake of hypothetical argument, seven new council members starting in January. The seven council members can determine by majority vote how they want to control their agenda and set up their rules and procedures. Once their rules and procedures are in place, it can only be changed thereafter for a particular meeting, and that's a waiver provision. So, for example, if we wanted to waive a provision on a particular night, that's a majority plus one. But, so the current operations is it's a council decision, it's not deferred to the council president, it's not deferred to a committee, it is a council of the whole making that determination, as it's currently set up.
But, so then, I guess my question is, if, like, that, to me, if we're saying that the format, the standard format is going to be just the first public comment period, then it seems like it would, does it not constitute a waiver of the rules to add the second public comment period?
So, again, if you, you're assuming there are rules in place, and so the admin code is starting from the proposition that there aren't any rules in place. So, again, let's take us to January 1st and say the admin code goes into effect. One of the things that at the organizational meeting would be suggested is that council determine what their agenda will look like for their meetings, what their rules would be. Now, to change that for one meeting would require a waiver. To change the rules entirely would be a motion process, so it's not just waiting one item, it's, we're going to change all of our rules, then yes, you would have to get, that would be a majority of council back to that again. But a waiver is sort of, the reason of a majority plus one for a waiver for a single incident is to make sure that politics aren't sort of being played to get around something that needs to get done, or that, to avoid accountability and transparency for the residents, so that you couldn't, you know, sort of ignore something that was required in order for a political party, let's assume, that had a majority of four, three on council, and I've lived through those days, right? So, I was, I was here when we had four members of one party and three of the other, and it reversed both ways, and there were things that went along party lines. This would not allow a party line to dictate that, that's the concept. Any other comment on that topic?
There you go. So, let me, let me make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So, at the beginning of the meeting, the agenda of each regular meeting shall be as followed, so we're going to reword that?
The suggestion, I believe, from Council President Bakay is that it would read now, "The agenda of each regular meeting should include the following," not shall, but changing shall to should.
Okay, and opening it up to either having one public comment or even the second one?
So, as a matter of law, you're required to have public comment in accordance with the Sunshine Act, which dictates certain times and places when it must be done, which typically, at a minimum, has to be done at the beginning of the meeting or before votes are taken, so that people can comment on action to be taken. What the language that Ms. Bakay is proposing is just to say that there should be public comment in the meeting, and the law dictates that you must. Whether you have one or two comment sections would be up to council determining its rules and procedure as it moves forward.
Okay, and then how would they decide that? Meeting by meeting, or at the beginning for, to cover meeting?
My recommendation would be that council, its organizational meeting in January, would adopt its rules of procedure, which would include its agenda for meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Which we haven't done in recent, at least during my time on council, because we've operated under the same rules. operated under the same rules. But this would allow us to, if we wanted to adopt that change, we could.
If I may, the only question I have is, for example, if someone is coming in late and it's a constituent, and by having the public comment in the beginning but not at the end, would that hinder on some of the people that do work late and come to the meetings at a later time?
Well, again, there's never going to be perfect, right? So, perfect can be the enemy of good. One thing I would note is, it's going to depend on how council determines to handle public comment. There's no guarantee that it will just be at the beginning, or that it wouldn't be, as Ms. Beckett indicated, beginning and end. And council's practice may be that it asks for public comment on each motion or action that's being taken, which means that now there's already multiple areas for public comment. You know, you could argue that somebody can only stay early. So, both sets of comment work. The, I will say that the concept of public comment as defined by the Sunshine Act is intended to make sure that comment can be had before city council action is taken. Because if, let's assume, in your scenario, somebody came late, they would still then have the opportunity to comment on the things that already happened at the next council meeting, which wouldn't be more than two weeks later.
And also, the way it stands now, if they're not preregistered, they're not speaking in that first period either way. In this, in this case, you know, because it's required to have public comment, in my view, it would allow folks to speak either way, whether they had preregistered or not.
One more quick question. So, if we go that way and folks are not required to preregister for their first or possibly the only public comment, then would they have to, would they have to register at all?
So, I think, as Ms. Beckett is proposing it, there's no, there's no requirement that people re-register unless council makes that a requirement. And again, what I would be suggesting is, in January, you would be setting forth your procedures for the upcoming year, or to continue from year to year, and I'd probably be recommending you do it by resolution because it's administrative action. One concept is allowing those who want to make presentations and know they want to be here to preregister, which would put them first on the list versus standing in line at the podium. You don't have to do that. That will be council's discretion. Again, what's, what's really happening through the administrative code here is the adoption of practices that are what we think have been good practices, you think have been good practices, and some, I think, this is a suggestion by Councilman Beckett to add some flexibility, which is not there because currently you have an ordinance that dictates what you have to follow, which is, so, I mean, again, this is your document and your successors. And the nice thing here is, again, I remind everybody that this is the first incarnation of it, and it is an ordinance, right? So, that means if council finds there are things they don't like about the way it's working, council can change it.
Counselor President, if I may. I agree that this would give us more flexibility for future councils to kind of, like the solicitor said, set the agenda at the organizational meeting. My question was in regards to public comment. Is there a way that we can prioritize city residents over folks who are non-city residents when giving the public comment? Like, can we make a second public comment for those who are, because we often have people who are non-city residents, which is fine, coming to speak at council meetings. But I, there has been some discussion, you know, that should city council, should city council prioritize those who live within the city to give public comment first?
So, so again, this would be up to council at the time it adopts its resolution for its rules. I would, I mean, if council were to ask me at the time, I would caution on it because you do have to also, it's not just residents under the Sunshine Act who are entitled to speak, it's any taxpayer. And there are some very small taxes that create a very large number of people who are taxpayers, and you-
Utility workers, yeah.
So, with that in mind, yes, I mean, I would, I would be cautioning, I would be cautioning council to be careful because the execution of it, not the concept of it, but the execution of it could cause problems. Typically, it's, it's, an innocent mistake can cause a big problem, even if intentions were right. So, the answer legally is, yes, you may. Do I, in my opinion, think it's a wise move? Probably not. So, am I, I'm reading that we have a consensus here to go ahead and, at least in the next draft, to make the changes suggested by, by Council President Beckett. Anyone opposed to my viewing it that way at this point? Okay, good.
Thank you.
So, then moving back through, back through the next sections, Article Seven governs ordinances and resolutions, and Council President Beckett had pointed out to me through the process set up for questions, had asked the inquiry, you know, when does the memo that is, that we've suggested be included with each ordinance? When should that come? And what she's really looking at is Article Seven, Section One, Part B, Number Four, which says, "With the introduction." And in looking at that, I see a potential problem with the way the draft words it, because introduction could be meant to be the first reading of the ordinance, but not the first time when council's actually getting the ordinance to consider and talk about, which could be at a city committee meeting. So, you know, one, one way of reading, rewriting that, if council wishes, would be with the first presentment of an ordinance to council or a committee of council?
I appreciate you bringing that up. So, that was my concern. It didn't really establish a clear timeframe or a deadline for submitting that memorandum, which I think is, I think the memorandum is great. I think it's important, if we're going to be considering legislation, that it should have sort of a rubric for addressing questions. But, in my opinion, it should be at the first committee, the first presentation. So, whether that be committee, whether that be a regular meeting of council, it should accompany that first presentation.
I think that makes sense. Anybody else have any comment on that?
The only comment I would have is, you know, it says, "Or city council members introducing the ordinance." If city council members are introducing the ordinance on their own, will they be, will they have access to city staff for, you know, questions or any legal advice on the ordinance prior to submitting the questions that the memorandum would require?
Well, again, this, the language is drafted, supposes that you, as legislators, each individually have the ability to draft and present an ordinance. In terms of, you know, whether, if you were not given access, that would be part of your memo, would be to say that, "I can't determine this because staff hasn't provided me with that answer." You know, my experience since 1994 is that city staff has worked very collaboratively with all members of council in drafting legislation. I don't see really an issue with that happening. But, again, your, your response would then be to your fellow council members that, you know, we couldn't get this information, and I would think the council could then make a motion to direct the appropriate staff and ask for it from, from the staff. So, I don't think any language change is needed, but I appreciate the point, I do. I also think that the, even in the worst of times, and there have been bad times and harder times, right? Even in, even in the hardest of times, city staff and council have worked very collaboratively on legislative practices.
And I'll also just say that you should not forget, functionally, in this, in this process, that the city clerk also works for city council and, you know, can be directed by members of council to help with research and drafting and that sort of thing.
Thank you. That concludes my question.
So, again, I sense there's a consensus here to go ahead and make that change, and I'll do so in the next draft. Moving forward, the next section is Article Eight, which was procedures related to forfeiture of office. Again, this is something that is new and was dictated by the charter, not currently existing in any of our ordinances, in the Third Class City Code or other provisions of law. This is unique to Lancaster. What we've attempted to do in drafting this is to create a procedure that provides due process, provides appropriate, provides appropriate levels of privacy as well as public hearing, so that sort of it's done the right way, and obviously defers at the end to the procedures that state law may require in order to effectuate the decisions of council on a forfeiture action. And, you know, again, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns on this section?
I don't have anything on this one.
So, that, again, takes us back to Article Nine, Boards, Commissions, and Authorities. And we already spoke, in large part, about Section One, Part F, Rules and Procedure. As you move through this, it currently lists the currently authorized boards, commissions, and authorities, and then moves on to the role of city administration. And again, this is now a legislative directive that city administration work with each of the boards and commissions, which does not exist legislatively currently. I mean, I think it's been the city practice, but it doesn't exist legislatively. So, any further questions on Article Nine?
I don't have anything.
Counselor President, if I may. With Section Four, listing the authorized boards, commissions, and authorities, should it say "including"? I mean, because we could by ordinance, you know, create a new boards or commission or authority. So, it has all of the current ones listed, but should we have any language in there on, you know, these are the current, you know, but there could be additional by ordinance?
So, I left, I left this blank for, I left that language out a little bit on purpose until we get a little closer to adoption, so I appreciate the point. One is, yes, we're going to have to create language that says, "This section automatically changes whenever a new board is created or a board is eliminated." There is, as some of you on council may be aware, a current review by staff to look at seeing whether we can consolidate some of these boards, and I would expect that some ordinances to do so may be forthcoming, which, so I was trying to tie a little bit of that together, but your point is very, very well taken, and it doesn't need to be added. And that would be my, we did that with some, with the organizational chart, if you recall, that would be the same language that I would suggest in Section Four.
Yeah, and that's all I had.
So, again, Article Ten will ultimately be where your ethics code goes. The Ethics Commission has met twice and has another meeting yet scheduled this month and is working through making recommendations to council that we can incorporate into, again, a draft for your review of an ethics code. Article Sixteen is the next one that we've covered, which is employment and human resources This section covers quite a bit that I think has been the longstanding practice of the city, but has not been legislatively required. It's sort of the incorporation and requirements for appropriate employment policy and guidance. Any questions, comments, or concerns with any part of this section?
I didn't have anything on this one, Mr. Henderger. I just appreciate that it's actually being put in, directly into code.
So, the last section is a series of general provisions. The first one is a process the city is currently using in, on many of its things, which is electronic signatures. The second one, again, incorporates a little bit of what we do now, which is fee schedules. It does provide some additional work to be done that has not been legislatively required before, although the law typically requires that all fees be rationally related to a service being provided, and which typically means you have to have some sort of cost analysis. In this section now, you know, there's a mandate that the Director of Administrative Services periodically review or arrange for review of all fees to make sure that they are still appropriate for the, appropriately being charged for the work being done, that fees are, again, adopted by resolution, so. And then Section Three is an incorporation of our existing code dealing with municipal liens and a restatement of law as to the city's right to enforce its ordinances. And the last section is something you've seen referenced throughout, which is, we obviously have a website, but in this administrative code, we're doing a lot of reliance on it, so it seemed appropriate to have a provision that requires that we maintain in good working order a publicly accessible website. So, any questions with respect to Article Seventeen?
I didn't have anything on this one, counselors?
That really takes us through the second tranche. With that, you know, the next, the next step will be, again, to convene another one of these meetings following receipt of the recommendations from the Ethics Commission. With your consent to move the process forward, I would suggest that I take those comments, obviously they'll be forwarded to you, but that I take them and incorporate them into a first draft, similarly to what I've done with the administrative code of the ethics code. There is an additional requirement under the charter before that can be adopted, which is there has to be a public work session regarding that. So, I think there's actually two sessions of council that are going to be needed. One is to really go through it, and maybe two, like we've done here, we'll see. And then to hold a public, a session open to the public, a work session, to, again, solicit public input on those key provisions of the ethics code.
That's great. Thank you very much. Counselors?
Just have one question in regards to anyone that would employ with the city, that would make any death threats or any comments publicly. Is that something that would be included in here as well of any type of misconduct with the ethic boards?
Well, I mean, that would be a violation of all sorts of employment policy. It's, the ethics code, which is set forth, is set forth in the charter, is, is really not dealing with, I'll say, behavior as much as is with, the concept is grafted. So, are we utilizing the city position for an unfair or for an economic benefit that we should not be receiving? That's the type of thing the Ethics Commission is actually talking about, is making sure that what comes before them are really the things that were intended to come before them and/or the State Ethics Commission under the state law and the charter.
Thank you.
Counselors, any other questions for next steps before we move to our next item on the agenda? the agenda? Counselor Med?
Thank you. And the only thing that I would just ask is are we still on pace, in the solicitor's opinion, to be moving forward in the timeline that we have set?
I see no reason that we can't have the administrative code adopted with, by the end of the year. Again, we have a little bit longer time for the administrative code than we do for the ethics code, but we're trying to wrap them in together. I was hopeful that you might be able to have the full thing ready October. I think we're pushed back by about a little bit longer because of the ethics code provision and it took a little while for appointments to be made to the Ethics Commission and set us a little bit behind there, but not insurmountable. So no, I think we'll still get there.
Keep your extra Tuesdays open, just a little bit longer. Terrific. Thank you very much, Mr. Hamburger. I appreciate it. We will now move into our public comment period. This is for comments related to this section of the administrative code. Again, as a reminder, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and please begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Anyone wishing to make public comment can do so by stepping forward to the microphone on my right, your left at this time. Good evening. You may need to turn that microphone on as you approach. There we go.
Irene Grievous, 400 Block of West End Avenue. My understanding is there was a, some kind of ethics commission or some kind of meeting, yet that has not been publicly made. And I've actually had tried to come to two previous scheduled ones and they were canceled. And I was not even aware that they had been rescheduled. Isn't that a violation of the Sunshine law? And when were these meetings for the ethics and planning for the Ethics Commission?
Do you have anything further, Ms. Grievous?
No, that's it.
Thank you. I'm not aware as a, to, to avoid any conflicts of interest, have not attended the Ethics Commission meetings as of yet. Mr. Hamburger, do you know off the top of your head when they were or if there was any changes or cancellations to their schedule?
I don't remember the dates. They were all advertised and none have been canceled.
Thank you. Yeah, I am seeing them on the website here. The next one that's listed, because I can see future dates, is September 25th here in Platte Council Chambers. Thank you.
Well, actually, I do have the cancellation from, I believe that was in August and there was one in July that they were both canceled. And I know that because I came personally and was totally was canceled and being rescheduled.
I don't have any, I don't have any of that information, but thank you. Are there any additional public comments on this section of the administrative code?
A question. In regards to the boards, commission, and authorities, is there any way that we could add, like right next to the title, the number of how many are per members? For example, the airport authority, is there five members? Is it 10 members?
You could, but I wouldn't recommend it because those could change over time. One of the things that, one of the things that you want to be conscious of in drafting legislation is that if you make changes that now require changes elsewhere and they're not caught, it creates ambiguity. So, I mean, you're going to, you have ordinances in place for every board and commission or you have the organizational documents that sets forth what their membership is. I think that could be done on the website as a better location rather than in the ordinance to avoid a potential change if, if something happens and, you know, if you have a vacancy, does that mean we have original appointments of five? What's the number mean next to it? But those are, you could do it. I'm just giving you my, my gut reaction as to why I might not choose to do that, but you theoretically could if council wanted.
It's, the question's actually being questioned by a community member that wanted to know why the numbers of members are not there. So that's, that's something that.
I would probably agree with Mr. Hamburger that the website would be an easier way for community members to access that information. That's a very good idea and also, and knowing that we can change it by ordinance, it could change at any time and much easier to go back and change a website than changing this document.
One other thing I would note is that this sets forth a new procedure for keeping track of who might be interested. So we are going to have a nomination platform similar to what we did for the Ethics Commission. And so that would be for each board and a registry is what we're calling it. That would be a very good place to keep that information, number of, the number of positions that each one has.
Yeah. I like that. Thank you. Any additional comments from the public on this section of the administrative code? Hearing none, we'll close public comment and we have reached the end of our agenda. Counselors, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Do adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.